Right, welcome everybody to make a start to this meeting of the CEB. Apologies for absence first of all.
Yes, I have apologies. I have apologies from councillor Turner, councillor Turner and councillor Raff.
Any declarations of interest? No, we've got a very large number of public questions which Nigel has kindly supplied us with. Going through the process of developing all the answers to them and we'll get those added to the minutes when they're published on Monday, I think.
Monday evening.
Monday evening and obviously send Nigel a direct copy of those answers as well. Then we come on to scrutiny committee reports. Craig, over to you. As you know, we've withdrawn or likely to withdraw the report at item seven, so it's the other items I guess you want to report on.
Yes, I'm obviously very happy to talk about the PSPO if you want to talk about that in the context of your decision to withdraw it, but I will otherwise leave that out until that item, in case we come up with a discussion.
No doubt we'll come back to it at some point in the future, in which case you can either resubmit the report or certainly you can look into it again in that context.
Yes, and I think myself and other members of scrutiny committee will be very happy to work with officers on trying to address some of the concerns that were raised in scrutiny committee. So there are different orders on different agenda papers, but if I move to the covered market leasing strategy, which is the next one on the item, on the hard copy report. So this was obviously to review the leasing strategy and we thought it was a significant improvement on previous ones. We only had two minor amendments which were around the numbers of organisations, number of shops or in a chain that would be considered to be a chain and hence to be excluded from that and we wanted to soften that a bit and essentially to allow more flexibility in interpretation for some local organisations might have more shops in their chain and others might have fewer and so we made that or softened it. And the other word, I'm just trying to look through what the other item was on paragraph 4.4. I'm struggling to remember what that was now.
It was the phrase which is courage with a word voided and I think we're happy to accept that because that was certainly the intention and it makes it stronger and gives a clearer policy direction to the officers when looking at any particular type of view.
Exactly, so that was really just those small recommendations and otherwise we felt it was a huge improvement, so for that. Moving on to the, sorry jumping around a little bit, is the next one is the support for businesses in the city centre. So this was a report that came from one of our working groups, so that wasn't as led by councillor Fry. And again, we thought these were excellent recommendations and we did not seek to amend any of those coming from that working group. I did notice that not all of them are being accepted by CEB, so I don't know if there's any reason for that, but what I would ask is that when recommendations are accepted or rejected, that's made clear. And I know we've got some things which say possibly and premature, which when we're doing tracking of recommendations, those aren't that helpful responses. So it's fine if it's a yes or a no.
Just on that Craig, would it be helpful to have a session at scrutiny where we go back through those and comment on them in more detail?
I think what it would do is, what I'll do is I'll pass these comments on to that working group and ask them to respond on those particular items where there's been a no or a possibly or a premature and ask them if they're necessary to engage with relevant officers.
I mean, for example, on the issue about delegating officer time and a bid, we are working with the town team on the development of a business improvement district proposal, but exactly the timing of that is something which is in the hands of the retail community themselves and there are differing opinions whether we should go early or late. So the question of officer time would then depend very much on what was available within the council to do, for example, the city centre strategy rather than the bid stuff.
Yeah, and I think, you know, a willingness to do that would be a yes and then probably a timing in the notes about some timing about when it would be reviewed to see whether or not it's possible to move it forward. I think those types, because we are putting in place a tracking system for the recommendations just to make sure things are carried through. So I think that's probably the only items which I've got to talk about, the others were coming from housing panel. I don't know whether anyone's here to talk to those, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Is anybody here to talk? Andrew, do you know who's going to deal with those? Yeah, he would, yeah, thanks.
Okay, thanks Chair. So there's two reports from the housing panel, each with, I think, one recommendation, two, well, one, sorry, two recommendations. But on the asset management strategy, councillor raised the point that there are a number, a high proportion of unused garages in a particular housing state that were leased and that within the asset strategy, the council could be looking to make better use of those. You know, we suggested a couple of ways that could be done, either as affordable housing or on-street car parking. Hopefully that's okay. And the other report is the HMO, the review of the HMO licensing scheme. The housing panel was, I think it's fair to say, fully supportive of option three, which is renewing the scheme for a further five years. And there was a discussion about the balance of workload moving forward between more compliance work, so making sure that landlords are doing what they're supposed to be doing and adhering to conditions and work extending the scheme to more HMOs and so there's more coverage. And I think the idea is that there'll be more focus on compliance and the reporting side will start to drop off, but there's a careful balance to be had. Second recommendation is in two parts and it's about, there's an upcoming corporate enforcement policy on the full plan. The first point is that enforcement within the private rented sector should be a priority and the second point is making the point really that there's different types of enforcement might need a different type of approach and the policy would need to be sensitive to that. I'd say any questions?
To take in reverse order, I think the discussion we had at the scrutiny panel was very good and I think officers reflected positively on the comments that the panel made around enforcement and the need for a not one size fits all enforcement policy when we decide that at a later stage on the full plan this year. I'm not sure exactly when it is, but... And with regards to the enforcement action and moving away from enforcing unlicensed properties and doing more to enforce standards, that was reflected as being something that reflects, you know, the setting up of a scheme and therefore needing those properties to be licensed. Now having got those properties licensed, being more forceful with regards to standards makes logical sense, so we take that comment on board and approve of that recommendation. With regards to garages, obviously garages are no longer a housing asset, so it wouldn't necessarily be reflected in this report, but in the past we have brought garage sites forward for new housing and we would continue to be looking at those, especially obviously where they're not being used for any other purpose if they're completely demolished, so.
I'm going to speak to the PSPO, I don't know if it's on the agenda. This city centre PSPO process has been a total shambles for word go, double standards and competence and refusal to listen. It's also been a national embarrassment. Let's just look at what's happened and where we've got to this afternoon. Ignoring your own consultation when it didn't tell you what you wanted to hear, rather than acknowledging that the vast majority of respondents did not want to criminalise busking for 60 minutes or begging more than once, you had bare-faced audacity to say the consultation was self-selecting. But you were happy enough to listen to public opinion on rough sleeping when the pressure on national papers got too great. Double standards and toxic labour. And you've had the arrogance to ignore the advice of professionals and professional bodies telling you these measures aren't necessary, won't work, that they're safer and more viable alternatives. In nearly every case where you were proposing a PSPO, you could have used a community protective order, but you have deliberately been as vague as possible about it. The advantage of a CDPA is that it is targeted, proportional and can actually be used to help an individual without the need to unleash summary powers that can be used to intimidate and infringe civil liberties. City ward councillor was consulted, but you ignored every suggestion, refused to answer emails and address points and concerns I've raised. Officers have admitted that busking per se is not an issue and that they don't trust street and masters to exercise powers responsibly. You don't even have a code of practice to enforce for enforcement. Scrutiny committee have told you that the busking cover conduct is not fit for purpose, but you have insisted on making non-compliance a criminal offence. At every stage you've pushed on regardless of thinking you know best. And where has this folly taken you? Today you have received a 20-page letter from Liberty, an international body defending human rights, councillor opinion from Jason Coppel, arguing the PSPO is unlawful. It is unlawful, it is unlawful, unlawful, unnecessary and unworkable. Why continue pushing forward with this nasty piece of Tory legislation? Where is your socialism? Where is your commitment to protect the vulnerable? It's time we go back to drawing board and rethink the law will aims for making this city centre world-class. I am delighted you have backed off. Let us now work through individual items line by line and get sensible working policies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you David, the item seven's been withdrawn because we had a letter from Liberty this morning which had a quite significant set of legal points in it which we obviously seek to clarify before we go any further. So we'll do that and then bring it back at that stage. Item six, Jean, I think you want to speak.
Yes, I welcome the opportunity that you've given now for people to speak about neighbourhood issues and I want to say a few words about Capsear, you may not be surprised to hear. We have an excellent small playground, Sunnymead, which is next to the primary school and the community centre, but it is getting very crowded. The school is doubling in size and the playground is at times unable to cope very well. So we have a lot of children waiting to use equipment, a lot of parents waiting with them. You could almost describe it as becoming a safety risk which you obviously don't want, but it's lovely to see it so popular and I was wondering whether the executive or the portfolio holders, which should be either Michael, Christine or both, might look at seeing whether there is some source of funding to have some more equipment on that playground or possibly even enlarge it. It would be extremely welcome, as you know, there is some significant deprivation in the area and it would be lovely if we could provide what they have asked for, can we have some more equipment? That's what I want to ask.
Thank you Jean, I think that's something which obviously if Mike were here, we'd ask him to take on board, but he's not. So Peter, can you make certain that the leisure officers are aware of Jean's point? And see if we can actually, both in spatial terms and in financial terms, do anything about it, because we're taking that.
I'll do my best.
Thank you very much. Item seven, as I said, we have withdrawn for the time being to allow us to look at the legal issues raised by Liberty. So moving on to item eight, which is the covered market leasing strategy, which is technically Ed's report, but since he's not here, I shall lead on it. This is, as the report makes clear, an updating of the previous strategy written in 2007 and has been found in practice to be somewhat deficient in areas that we wanted to really reinforce. So in the light of what the retail group advised us on, we have revised it and the changes are identified very clearly in item five, which is a move to go for more food, fresh food and food and beverage representation and reduce the non-food area, clearer guidance on the types of trading activities we want and the criteria we're going to use for assessing new traders, the process for signing leases and then a very important issue about not allowing the market to become smaller and smaller in terms of numbers of units by amalgamation. So those are the key points. Jane, thank you very much for the work you've done on this, would you like to, and Elaine, would you like to, or Elaine?
I think I should really just point out that this was an update, not a complete rewrite. So it was intended as a tenure document with the possibility of a review within five years. It was determined that within that five-year update, we would look at it, have an opportunity to review, update and basically future-proof it. The little bit of background, it was, the council undertook the covered market management and operations review in 2013 and that was an assessment that was commissioned by our specialist advisers and one of their recommendations was to review. One of the things that it introduced was to look at target mix and uses and look at trading styles etc. So again, it's just future-proofing it. It's a few slight changes, but it tightens it up for the future. One of the things that we need to flex is very slightly the comparison group versus the fresh food. You'll see on there some of the figures, the percentages. Ideally, in time, the comparison drops by five percent and fresh food increases by five percent wherever possible.
Could I just make one further point? Obviously, we've consulted very closely with traders on this one, not just in terms of the original report that the retail group carried out, but the strategy's been out there as well, so we've really tidied with the traders there.
Any questions?
I just wanted to welcome it, I think it's a further strengthening of one of the jewels in the city's crown, the covered market and I think if we're able to deliver this strategy in the way that you've described it, I think it will do nothing but improve the market and make it more attractive, both for local people to use but also as a tourist attraction, both of which I think are very important. And as a regular shopper in the covered market, I welcome anything that can be done to strengthen it.
Thanks, I certainly endorse that. I like very much the action plan that we've got because it does focus on that phrase that comes out of the retail strategy, which is that we want it to be a must-visit experience with local, national, international reputation with multiple attractions and that's what we're aiming for. And I do very much hope we can stop this trend towards more amalgamation, keeping the smaller units because that makes for variety and makes for much more interest, I think, than we have in the past. So, thank you very much, both of you. Can we endorse the proposals there and the new strategy? Thanks very much. Moving on then to the next item, which is the excitingly named Blue Bin Premier League, with which goes no doubt a large amount of international management and money from Russia and from various parts of the Middle East and so on to buy various teams in this particular league. No doubt they're leading to corruption and other scandals with... Anyway, Geoff, do you want to tell us about your success in surprising some money out of DCLG?
Yes, they asked for bids at the end of last financial year, it was all done in quite a bit of a rush, but we were among the local authorities that were successfully granted money. We were given the sixth highest amount of any individual authority and it's a sum of £350,000 for fixed term for three years. So that's quite a significant round bid win. The aim of it is to incentivise dry recycling around the city. It's something that scrutiny panel and their recycling subcommittee very much wanted the recycling team to pursue. It's in our nature to do that anyway, that's part of the remit of the recycling team to seek external funding and they've been phenomenally successful in this case. We're ready to go, we're awaiting the authority to spend and we would like to launch it during recycling week, which is in two weeks' time.
So can you tell a bit more about how residents are going to be invited to register and notified about this? Because that's clearly a key part of this, to encourage them to see it as a competitive operation in which they can take part.
Yes, it is designed around having a league. That league is based on the improvements in recycling around specific areas of the city. The idea is that there will be a community prize, a monthly community prize, £400 for a community scheme and individual prizes for those that register their approval and support to the scheme inside their neighbourhood and that will be drawn by lottery. We will visit individual winners to make sure that they're worthy winners, that they are actually taking part in the scheme and we will be debating with ward councillors what schemes they would like to see on their list for consideration by a public vote to win that public vote support so that we can fund that scheme on a monthly basis. No two areas, no area will be allowed to win consecutively or more than twice in a six-month period. So there's quite a lot of money here for locally funded community schemes and it will be with the ward councillors soon to decide what schemes they wish us to support.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just wanted to say, I think it's a nice example of how a scrutiny working group came up with a series of ideas including this, we discussed it with Geoff, pushing it open the door and officers are very keen to hear that and we started to build it from the very inner of the scheme, which is actually incentivising, using carrot arms to increase impact. So what a great idea to get community groups to benefit, I was onto that. So I think it's a win-win all round. Really congratulations to officers for getting the bid through the system, but it was a senior idea that came through scrutiny and recycling groups. I think it's a great example of what we can work, how we can work together to make a great thing happen.
Thank you very much, Craig.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I'm also how large an area is, was that a bit like asking how long a piece of string? I think that probably that we've got areas, we've got local associations and those sorts of already in place structures are going to find this a little bit easy to set up. Are they going to be able to give any support to those areas in the city where there perhaps aren't those obvious support networks?
First point first, we've been collecting recycling data by round for quite some considerable time now so that we understand the baseline position for all of our rounds. This doesn't completely follow and mirror wards, so there will be a deal of ward member cooperation around what scheme should go forward. But we will be in consultation with the ward members to actually finalise details around that, so you will be hearing from the recycling team very soon. The second point is that part of the bid was actually to engage three officers, somebody that would lead and manage the project and two field officers that would get out and about to stimulate community interest, to publicise it and to actually help communities through the process so that they are in a good position. I think one of the key elements of the scheme is that it's a measure of performance improvement rather than you just happen to be the top recycling area in the city. So it will be done on a percentage improvement basis and there is that catch where it's not going to go to the same community group time after time after time. So there is a fair opportunity, if people aren't successful in the first place, that they can learn from that experience and we will help them, guide them through that so that they're in the best position to run the scheme.
While we're in the season of plates and all those sorts of social events going on, we think it might be an idea to perhaps emphasise this. I know that you have to go and remember to the team, I've been inviting this for example. So that's the ideal opportunity to emphasise and get back to you, Geoff.
We've been working closely with the council's communication team about how best to do that and indeed you're quite right, we are ever-present at all sorts of plates, we were two on Saturday it was actually and it will be a message that we will be handing out at that time.
Low carbon week, I guess it's another opportunity for this to be rolled out as well.
Whenever we go door stepping and on any other programmes, we're not just there to talk about one single item. I'm afraid they tend to get the hold of the recycling message and this will be part of that message.
Thank you. Yeah, it's an extremely good scheme and clearly tackles one of the key issues, which is sort of hearts and minds challenge, particularly with department, particularly with cycling. The challenge, I think, will be exemplified by the table sixteen, the top one, which shows the residual waste amounts going up year on year on year. The amount of rubbish generated is increasing. I just wondered if you could explain that two tables linked to one another, because I'm quite sure it's fully understood.
We have two corporate measures, which not only do we clock the recycling figure, we also look at the amount of waste that isn't able to be recycled, that currently now goes off to the energy recovery facility at Adley. How much kilograms are out per household? The city is really rather good at that, we're one of the top urban authorities in the country, which actually does show that we take the waste hierarchy very seriously because we don't really want it created in the first place, but if we have got it, then we want to be able to deal with it in the best possible ways. It's clear that the more that we recycle, the less will go to the energy recovery facility and that's how those two tables are generally linked. There is a dependency on the way that the recycling figure is actually calculated. You might name a member, but a little while ago they took sweeper horizons out of that calculation and that figure then suffered because of that. Really, the more that we can incentivise and we can educate and in some cases enforce the need to present waste correctly, i.e. recycle all that you can, the better it is for the amount of waste that goes to land for our advantage.
I wanted to ask about the local good causes and the nomination of those good causes. Because would it be possible to identify those good causes before the scheme's put into place in that neighbourhood? Because that might, A, incentivise people to rally around and think, yes, we're doing this for our children's centre or our place scheme or whatever, and B, it would give the good causes some opportunity to help the city and to help everyone. I wanted you to give that one out.
Well, we'll certainly take that on board and in our discussions with you, we'll see which is the best way to actually deliver the message. It clearly is an incentive if there is an obvious carrot dangling there, but then of course, this is a premier league and you have to win. So of course you'll get another bite at the cherry each month, but essentially it is all about recycling improvement.
You could do a bit of trawls first of all Geoff and ask ward members roughly what they might like to see and use that as a kind of basis as a first trowel, isn't it?
That's the first intention of the...
Yeah, yes. Great, so thank you very much indeed, congratulations.
We're working on this, we carry a couple of more of them, I guess. And we can think through that, yes?
Next item is... Next item is item ten, which is the ICT strategy. Nothing more important in terms of service infrastructure, Susan?
Yeah, I can't work out whether I'm new to this or it's new to me, but anyway, one of those two things, both. So I'm just going to make a few introductory comments, and then people who are much better qualified to me can answer all the difficult questions. So obviously, this new strategy is vital to enable the council to work effectively. It's based on business needs. And I think one thing that's very clear from it is that there's an awful lot of work going on, and there's going to be a number of other reports coming back in the future from some of the work that's going on here. We've already done quite a lot in this council to do what's called channel shift, which is move people from one form of connection with the council to another. One of those is telephony, and also through websites and apps in terms of making it easier for people to report things to the council. And what this strategy is talking about is doing some more of that. But in all, one of the things that I will be very careful of as we work through the strategy is making sure that whilst it's really important for staff in the council to have good access to the best possible IT, and it's great for the public to have really good and innovative ways of engaging the council, particularly because actually it's cheaper for us, and therefore cheaper for the taxpayers in Oxford. I'm also very mindful of the fact that not everybody in the city has access to IT and the ability to engage with the council in that way. So we will always be making sure that nobody's excluded through lack of access to ICT. And one of the things I should also be looking for as we go forward is making sure that we're fully aware of diversity in our city. And making sure that we are really making everything properly accessible. So even where we are dealing with people who are able to access technology, we're making sure that it is accessible to them, both in terms of potential disabilities and also language. And I think that's probably what, all I wanted to say in terms of introductory remarks. I think that's probably enough.
It's clearly a very ambitious strategy. So Helen and Paul, do you want to take us through the key elements of it that you'd like us to know about?
Thank you. The strategy sets out a key set of principles, which follow industry best practice. The fundamentals of that are that our ICT choices are led by the business. Followed by, you know, we then provision the right information at the right time for the business to make the decisions. Whether those are decisions of transactional level to support individual citizens or strategic decisions about whole communities, we aim to provide that information. We do that by provisioning a whole bunch of different applications from a whole range of suppliers. And then finally, and the last piece of the jigsaw, is providing all of the infrastructure for those applications to run on and to give people devices so they can view that information when they're in their offices, when they're out and about, or whether they're members of the council. So that's a very clear hierarchy of thinking about the way we approach IT and the fact that the business is very firmly the lead driver there. In terms of the vision that we've laid out, we've specified the key areas that we're working on so that we can achieve those and match up to those principles. And then finally, we've articulated some of the key areas that are on a very busy roadmap of projects. As has been indicated, there's a lot, lot of work to do, and it's very challenging. IT is moving very quickly, and we've got a lot to get done. But we've got a plan there, that we've articulated how things fit together, and we're working within the budgets that we have to make that happen.
You've mentioned there at the end of the roadmap, which obviously is important, and it identifies a number of very key changes which we're expecting in the fairly near future. One is the new ICT partner, replacing the county council, the converged telephony and the endpoint devices refresh. And then where are we on those three different themes? Because they're all pretty key to what we can achieve.
Certainly. The new ICT partner, the ITT stage closed on Wednesday this week. So we're in the process of evaluating the tenders that we've received. There's a CEV scheduled for the end of July specifically to make the final decision on the recommendations following that process. So we've got a tight period to do all of the analysis and evaluation. But we've got resources lined up to do that. And that will put us in a position to start the transition in September, which should give us ample time to complete that by the end of March. The converged telephony solution, we made the decision two or three months ago now. We're well into the design and implementation phases. We've been doing some work on planning that with various business services, particularly around how we migrate users across to the new service. And that is happening throughout the summer and into the early autumn. So that is on plan. And apologies on the... And the endpoint device strategy, yes, is we're doing the evaluation phase at the moment. We've gone through various reviews of the available technology, and we're formulating the recommendations of which flavour of technology we think is most appropriate. So that will come to, I think it's due to come to in the next CEV.
Sounds very encouraging.
Yeah, do we learn anything or change this document from S O D C to fire?
We, our strategy in terms of the new ICT partner is to get partners who can deliver core IT services in an industry standard way. We are not proposing at the moment to have any on-premise IT data centre capability. Our current data centre via the county is based in Birmingham. And it is likely that any data centre we choose in the new service will also be located a reasonable distance away from our own buildings. Therefore, we have some isolation. It would be quite a big event to affect both the data centre and our own locations. I think the other things that our understanding is that a lot of the core disaster recovery type services for that, in that event, did work, and they were able to provision the IT services that they needed reasonably promptly. Obviously, that didn't help with the building itself, but that's a separate issue.
Good, well, thank you both very much. I think we've been through that, and look forward to the next stage of the negotiations.
Thank you. And then it is the review of the HMO licensing scheme. This report is the report we have to have prior to consultation on the renewal of the scheme, which is in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, which are the expiry dates of the existing scheme. But it's important to get the consultation right, so this is the preparatory paper that Scott.
That was the beginning of what I was going to say. Yeah, so this begins with a review of the additional licensing scheme for HMOs that we've had in place for the last four years. And I'm exposed about extending that scheme and introduces the consultation on that work. It's been a highly successful scheme. If members turn to page one hundred, it gives a good summary of the various successes that we've had here. It's a self-financing scheme. And one of the things it does want to point out is that, you know, we identified as a council that this portion of the stock and tenure in Oxford was an element that was, you know, highlighted by very poor standards. And we've seen that ninety percent of the properties have needed, we've identified standards that we need to lift standards. And additionally, you know, there's been three point two million pounds worth of investment within this stock. It's a sizable and growing portion of the market in Oxford, in fact. And it's almost the same size as our man of council stock we've got. So targeted measures in this area are sensible. A proposal here is to extend the scheme in its entirety across Oxford. So full consultation, there will probably be revised fee structure coming out of that. But it's been a successful scheme, there's a lot more work left to do, which is a discussion we had with scrutiny last week as well. And the recommendation from them reflects that, that whilst we've got a lot of, you know, we've managed to get three and a half thousand properties licensed, there's a lot more to do around lifting standards.
And it is not just a just growing one, it's likely to be a lot bigger than the social housing sector by the end of this decade, is the way things are going. Ian and Adrian, thank you very much for the work that you've done. Would you like to add things to what Scott said?
Yeah, I mean, I think Scott's, he's captured it in a nutshell, really. I mean, you know, the scheme's been running for some time now, and it was due a review. I mean, it's a legal requirement for the council to conduct a review. And I think the thing is, is like we said at scrutiny, that there has been some successes, but it's not to the point where we can just walk away now and, you know, sort of let the market deal with the situation itself. We need to sort of just keep the, keep the foot on the pedal and, you know, evolve the scheme so that it deals with, you know, some of the issues that we're facing now.
It is of course growing the market, that's the point, isn't it? That even though you may get to a certain point in existing stock, it's actually growing all the time. So there's a new set of HMOs to come on tap every year.
Yeah, I mean, that's right, Geoff. I mean, originally, when the scheme was declared, well, in two thousand and five, we estimated we'd go about five thousand HMOs. Census information now from two thousand and eleven, so that's still, you know, fairly old, four years, four years old. Saying around about six thousand nine hundred. So, you know, in the last four years, that could well have increased. And because of the housing market in Oxford, you know, the high house prices and obviously low income households and vulnerable people, their ability to access homeownership is extremely difficult. So they look to that market to, you know, for accommodation. So sharing accommodations is going to be a thing of the future.
I think from my side, I'd just kind of say that I think if we don't intervene in this market and regulate it, conditions will only go down. So I think it really is something that we need to do as a service to ensure this becomes business as usual, that it is the normal that many parties in Oxford, where there's sharing going on, has a licence from the council, is subject to regular inspections, is managed by someone who is a fit and proper person. So, you know, it does give us a full range of control. So, you know, as Adrian said, you know, we've managed to get so far with it. It's a tough market to regulate, we'd like to have some more time to move the situation on.
So we've got a tax and three ten week consultation period. And clearly, we've got a very big potential market of consultees there. And I trust that we've actually got a clear strategy for getting through to each of the different groups. Particularly picking up Susan's earlier point about diversity and the fact we have a significant minority population of landlords here who will potentially be interested, and indeed, tenants. So we've got to really tackle that wide diversity there is in the city as part of this consultation.
Yes, Geoff, I mean, that's something that we did before we even sort of looked at the review report. We put together a brief to senior officers within the council with a plan to set out how we would consult, you know, with different parties. So there will be a questionnaire that will be put online, that will also be available on websites for some of the neighbouring authorities as well. So people that don't necessarily live within the Oxford city area can also, you know, hopefully access that questionnaire. There's a series of roadshows that we're carrying out throughout the city, that will be sort of between June and July. There's a solo event at the Cassam Stadium in July, which will be, again, will be advertised. And landlords and agents will be invited to come along to that. We've been in touch with the universities so that we can, you know, before the students all go home in the next few weeks, we can, we can sit down with some students and do some focus group work on that. And we're looking to do a similar sort of thing with tenants as well, and some of the certain ethnic groups within the city that tend to occupy this type of property.
Yeah, and I'll ask one more. It's clear that a lot of the recent East European communities have tended to use HMOs as their main source of housing. And language qualities vary quite enormously in that particular demographic group. So it's important to make certain we can actually tap their needs carefully. Chris?
Yes, thank you. As well as landlords and tenants and agents, the other group of people that are affected by the growth of HMOs are neighbours. And certainly the ward directors, and in some parts of that ward, the character, the nature of streets have changed hugely because of, because of the growth of HMOs. And I wonder whether it's possible also, as part of that consultation, to talk to local residents' organisations and get their perspective. Because I think especially things like the external appearance and done with your mattresses and all the things that you're very aware of. But they do, you know, they do impact on how we feel about where they live. And I think it's important that we capture those issues too.
Yeah, we were looking to take advantage of, you know, as many of these sort of residence associations and community groups as we possibly could. I mean, the intention is to just sort of try and get the word out first that the actual consultation is started. So, you know, the plan is on Monday, we'll be sort of just going around the city, dropping off flyers to different organisations and agents, so that it's just spreading the word really to begin with. But, you know, we know who the contacts are, so it's just a case of getting in touch with them to arrange some events.
And I'd really like to ask you as members to help us to spread that word out. And, you know, to make sure that if there are some groups that we're missing, you've got your contacts, because you are fully embedded in your communities, and if you can help us get the message out, then that's great.
Don't have a name? Yes, I was just going to say that I just think this has never been more needed. And I note from the report, and it was on page one hundred and nine, I was trying to find it just now, that the estimate in the report is that one in five of the resident population actually now live in an HMO. And even allowing for the number of students, I think it is extremely high now. And I've really noticed the difference in recent years in Churchill Ward. It's really changed, really changed. Where it used to be family properties, either privately owned or privately rented, those are now shared properties with, some of them are students, but many of them are just working age people who are in their twenties and their thirties, sharing houses, because that's the only way of being able to afford to live in this city. So it is very clear that there is a need for regulation. And I was quite interested talking to a colleague recently, who was very pleased to be moving into what was going to be an HMO, because she felt it was better regulated than just a privately rented house. So there you go. I think that that says something about the success of the work that you're doing in that people are now keener to move into an HMO perhaps than in the past, let's put it that way. Two issues I wanted to particularly pick up, though, which is beds and sheds, which I think remains still a really tricky issue, and I don't think we've really fully managed to tackle successfully. And I was interested to hear what you think we can do better as a result of this. And also the whole issue around hot bedding, which I just don't think we've really touched on at all. And I know it's particularly difficult to identify, but I'm particularly concerned about it because I just think it's such a horrible way for people to have to live.
Okay, well, regarding beds and sheds are unlawful developments. As you know, we, the council put hundred and fifty thousand pounds forward into the, that was a successfully big CLG to match for. So we have that funding, we did an awful lot of work with it, we knocked quite a few places down, served a lot of enforcement notices, but a portion of the funding went out at the end of the last financial year. We have got sixty thousand to keep the program going. And really, it's a question of what decisions are made at the half-year mark with that. At the moment, we've got some officers who are following up the enforcement notices which were served by the planning enforcement officers there. There's a recent successful prosecution, which is on our website, of somebody who failed to comply with enforcement notices. So that work is, it is ongoing. But the extent of it really is going to be a decision for you to take. decision for you to take later in the year, whether, whether you want it mainstreaming within the environmental health function, or whether you think it deserves some additional funding to, to keep it going. On the topic of, of hot bedding, I mean, when we licence an HMO, we give it a maximum number of occupants based on the facilities and amenities that it contains, and the size of the rooms, et cetera. We, we will visit properties and carry out the inspections and check that that figure is, is being complied with, and we'll take action, prosecute the failure to comply with the licence if there's two occupants inside a property. So if there are specific addresses where there's a suspicion that there's overcrowding going on and it's a house of multiple occupation, then if people let us know where that is, we'll carry out some investigations and see what we can do.
So the, the, beyond the, exceeding the maximum number of people in a particular dwelling?
Yeah, that's correct. If we, if the instance is licensed for six and we turn up and it was ten, then we'll take action for that.
The issue is whether they're there at the time because of property, we may be in hospital, doing emergency procedures and all that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just to cut back in on that, but the issue, as I understand it, try again, the issue as I understand it, is that people essentially use the same, literally the same bed in shifts. So you wouldn't necessarily find all ten people who might be renting space in their house at the same time, you'd find five at any one time. It's just that they'd be the different five depending on which time of day you went. So I don't, that, that's the sort of issue I'm talking about. It is anecdotal, most of the evidence I've heard about this. If I only had addresses, I would be very happy to give them to you, but I just hear increasing rumours that that is a, a way in which, because of the high rental prices in Oxford, people are being forced to live. And, and that is something, as I said, which really concerns me, because if that is the case, that is a really horrible way for people to be, to be living. And I am concerned about the people who are exploiting them and allowing that to happen. So anything we can do to tackle that, I'm interested in, but quite what the mechanisms are, because clearly it is very difficult to identify, and these are people who are necessarily going to be offering up this information, because it's probably the only way they can afford to live here.
Yeah, just, I wanted to comment and a couple of questions. And I have to say that Ian, your team does some really excellent work, and when I refer properties, it's dealt with very, very quickly. So, so thank you for that. I think we should also be encouraging all councillors to report, I'm sure where HMOs in particular wards is, is more prevalent than others, then I'm sure they're on the board. But I think there, you know, that there are an increasing number of HMOs across the city, as your work explains. On, on the consultation, I'm not quite sure when that's going to be completed, but you, you talked about the universities. I would suggest that perhaps the end of term is probably not the best time to capture students, to get their thoughts on their, their dwellings, but perhaps at the beginning of the year, where perhaps students are moving into residential, you know, out of campus residential areas would be a bit more appropriate. And I guess the sale of housing association property is going to impact on, on this eventually. It will, it will compound the problem where properties are sold, sold on, rented out, as we've seen by, you know, from our own properties.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with the, the, the situation regarding the right of way. I suppose the only sort of thing that we, we have as a local authority that can assist with that is the underplanning. We have an Article Four direction which limits the, you know, the percentage of, of HMOs that you can have within a certain area. So should it be that, that housing association properties fall within the private sector with a view to that person and trying to use that as an HMO, they would, you know, they would have to go or come to the council for, for planning permission. I mean, in terms of the students, I, you know, again, I, I agree completely with what you're saying, unfortunately, the, the timing of the, of the review, you know, we're, we're at a stage where we, we, we're quite restricted in terms of, of the consultation. We have to do ten weeks, but then we have to come back to October CEB in order to, to bring you the results and, and, you know, and the recommendations, in order for us to then renew the, the scheme before it expires in, in January 2016. But I, I, I can assure you that I have got two meetings set aside with students at, at the university next week. And obviously, you know, the, there are some sabbatical students that tend to stay over a, a little bit longer, as I understand, than, than some of the sort of mainstream students. So they're looking at whether we can actually do some work with, with them as well. So, you know, we're trying to, to, to cover that, that pace.
Sorry, there was just one more point. I'm just wondering whether it would be a suitable topic for those, those wards that are particularly affected, to have that as a forum topic? You know, if you're thinking of something to, to encourage local residents, I think you might be, you might be able to talk that.
Well, thank you very much indeed. We can approve that for consultation and wait for a report in October.
Right, so this is, this report's come back to you post-consultation, so this would have been largely seen before. It follows an extensive stock condition survey, which the, the council commissioned just over a year ago, which saw eighty percent of our, more than eighty percent of our stock surveyed in its entirety. The, the, the asset management strategy sets out proposals for, for options around stock disposal and refurbishment. But as you say, one of the key items that the public in particular will be interested in is our proposals around the Oxford Standard. And this takes us a lot further than the, the previous decent home standard. Once the decent home standard was an ambition, that is now the standard. We want to be ambitious as a council, and we've set out an Oxford Standard here to do just that. So there, there's plans to, to increase the, the spec for kitchens and bathrooms, and also see kitchens and bathrooms refurbished more regularly than they currently are, so seeing them refurbished in, in a twenty five year, twenty year and a twenty five year respective timeframe. There will be more extensive proposals around energy, which we'll see in the energy strategy in September time, I believe, at CEB there. And that will set more clearly what our proposals are there with regards to lifting sat ratings on properties, both the average and the floor sat rating, and how we're going to go about doing that with regards to insulation, photovoltaic panels, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a big part of the Oxford Standards that's still to come. There's still more work to be shaped, around shaping the Great Estates Programme and looking at how we have new standards for external areas on our estates, as well as what's heavy in here, which is more about the internals. So, so there's work still to be done in, in, in doing this. It follows last summer some extensive consultation with the most important partners we have, which is our tenants. We did it a number of different ways, including meetings here at the town hall. We got them involved in, in a scrutiny panel, joint scrutiny panel with councils, which I think was quite innovative at the time. We've done it in a range of different ways, and I think it's something that we can be proud of, that we have got a proposal here to really be aspirational about our stock.
Scott. Stephen, congratulations, big report, very good. Anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think it's just worth reminding members that underpinning the strategy, you know, members agreed in this year's budget to support the enhanced standards and the increased investment already. And just to inform members that we've already, as part of our commissioning of the investment programmes this year, we're already commissioning in accordance with this strategy and the standard.
Thanks. Alex?
Yeah, picking up on a point Dee made about last report, the government's proposals for housing associations potentially have an impact on this strategy, so I'd like to know how, how we're going to take that into account. The way it's going to impact on us is if, if I'm plucking an example at random out of the air, if a housing association tenant in Whitney bought their property under right to buy, as I understand the government's proposals, Oxford City Council would have to sell one of its houses in order to refund the housing association in West Oxfordshire, because it's only councils with council houses that can sell council houses. So of course, areas which don't have council houses won't have to sell them, and of course we do. The implications obviously are not entirely clear, but that, that is going to have impact on a whole range of things within this strategy. Portfolio mix, obviously, where we put investment in place, there's not much point, say, for example, I don't know if this is the case, but if one of our larger properties, say, is one of the low sap rated ones, we could spend an enormous amount of money bringing its sap rating up, only to find that we're compelled to sell it. It won't be a tenant trying to buy it, it would be us being compelled by the government to sell it in order to refund my putative housing association in David Cameron's constituency. So how are we going to handle that, that kind of issue, which I think is really very serious and potentially alters our prioritisation quite significantly?
Right, great. What can we get to, tell you a bit about?
I think, I think, I think from, from, from the officer's point of view, there's a huge review which will need to be undertaken over the next three to six months. Clearly, if this, this framework goes forward, it challenges the whole of our housing strategy. It challenges the whole way we manage our stock, and we would have to ask some questions about whether the out of revenue account in the medium term can be sustainable in the way that we think it is, and the investment which we've committed to can go forward. The government sort of issuing one or two notes and ideas about how this could be implemented at the moment, the worst of which would give us a valuation of the twenty five percent highest value stock, which would be subject to forced sale, based on a regional figure, rather than an overall figure. So the suggestion, which I heard before the general election, was that, you know, you would be forced to sell voids as they arise on, is it twenty or twenty five percent, Stephen?
The modelling that we've done is that it would impact on just almost twenty five percent.
Yes, so twenty five percent of our, our stock. Stock tends to turn over at about a rate of two and a half percent a year. So when you think about it, if, you know, over, over a ten year period, you, you would lose, you know, about twenty percent of a quarter of your stock. But the, the regional figures which are being bandied around at the moment suggests that, you know, we would look at the council house stock value across the whole of the South East or the South West of England, depending which region you're in, we, we could have forty five percent to fifty percent of our whole stock in the bracket that would be sold as it was re-let. So you'd end up with twenty percent of half of our stock, if you like, disappearing over that period, which if that was the case, would make it almost unviable for us to build additional stock just for it to be sold off. Clearly, the government would have to give you some money back in order to help you redeem the loan, which we've taken out. So we recently borrowed £200 million in order to buy our stock out of national subsidy. Now, if that stock then disappears, you'd expect the government to give you some, you know, to, to redeem some of that £200 million. As you would expect, we've been in touch with the government to offer, to do some work with them, to model the impact of this on council HRAs, and to try and work through options which would minimise the impact on high value areas like Oxford, and allow us to continue having a sustainable HRA. But I must say that in terms of significant investment decisions over the next year, there is a point where if the government doesn't change what it's saying, it wouldn't be prudent to make those investment decisions. So it's, it's the most serious thing the council has faced in recent years, really.
Literally depressing scenario. Scott? Yeah, just, you know, directly on Alex's question, we think we can be confident over the next four years with our current proposals for investment, so there is that element. But the, the extensive financial modelling that, that Peter's describing is, is ongoing. I think, you know, I'm moving a little bit off topic, but what's particularly pernicious, well, an element that's very pernicious about this proposal that has not yet, I think, been talked about, is that if we are selling off our void properties, those void properties are not available for re-letting. Right now, we have around six hundred new social housing lets a year. If we are losing fifty percent of those, that, those numbers, that's significantly fewer people that we're letting to. Right now, there are six hundred families every year who are in a better situation because we have properties available to let to them. That won't be happening, and in fact it'll have a knock on effect, because you don't get the churn through the system. So you'll be losing even more than fifty percent, you know, on, on the basis of Peter's figures. You know, and I think that the danger, I think, for those of us in housing, or those of us who are particularly strongly opinionated on this, is that the government want to stack this up as invested interests against the little guy that wants to buy his home. And I think we need to try and make it a bank, those little people out there who, who aren't going to have a home available to let. The thing with the old right to buy was that you would lose affordable housing ten, twenty years down the line. With this, you're losing affordable housing right away, right this year, and, and that's, that's hugely pernicious, and it's going to lead to a lot more troubling and difficult situations in the, in the city that we already have enormous amounts of people in, in housing difficulty already.
Of course, it doesn't, it doesn't make any difference how you vote in elections, does it? Right, shall we approve the two recommendations then, to adopt the asset management strategy with the Oxford Standard and the action plan, and note that we'll get an energy strategy later this year? Thank you very much. Item thirteen then, here's the Tower Block refurbishing project. Jean, you wanted to speak on this, if you approach the table. Scott, you going to lead on this one, or is? She'd like to, yeah, yeah. Jean, go, go first.
Okay, right, thank you very much. Yes, it's that increasing cost, obviously, one, one and a half million is, is rather a lot. And following this, the problems with the Rose Hill, that increasing costs, it's very important that councillors seem to be managing their costs and expenditure rather better than they did on that one. The recommendation two, about reconfirming authority delegates, et cetera, et cetera, pointed toward the contract, that decision obviously must be made public and made very public, not just be told as we have ours sometimes. Well, it's, it's published on the website, if you know where to look for it, but I hope that that, the decision will be made very public, so that people are told, look, you can see it, there it is, so that everybody knows what's been happening, who's, who's contracted. Looking at the sources of that extra funding, it makes sense that we use some HRA money, if we have any, after the previous discussion, which is very appalling. I was just thinking, maybe we need to initiate a revolution, some mass lobbying, all sorts of things are coming about, because I don't think people have realised the huge impact, as you've just explained, it's horrible. But supposing that we still have an HRA, there's some money in it, yes, if we've been more efficient, if we haven't underspent last year, that's fine, that is a sensible place to take money from. Taking another hundred thousand out of the balance to reduce it to 3.9 million, well, it's either in or there, it's a small amount, no problem. But I am worried about allocating £700,000 of the unallocated Section 106 affordable housing money just to make up the deficit here. That means a number of new houses that would have been built with that money will not be built. And I would ask that you reconsider using that money for this purpose, that it would be much better to use it for a new bill. Then, other thing is, you know, what was done to reduce the cost, I think that's something that I would like to address when it comes to the confidential session, because there are a lot of questions on that, which obviously are not appropriate at this stage, so we may postpone it till then.
On the sources of funding, Neil, Nigel, do you want to lead us on this?
Yeah, just to pick up the issue around the Section 106 money, it's probably a badly, badly worded point there, actually. What we're saying is that we could, we could basically replace the Section 106 monies that are unallocated at the moment, and use them on the new bill programme that are in the budget, that are currently assumed to be funded from revenue. So it is, it is a badly worded, I, I appreciate it, I apologise for that, but that's what it's actually saying. So the Section 106 monies are currently not allocated, they're allocated to the new bill programme, i.e. affordable housing, and we would use those monies that are currently funding that new bill programme, i.e. revenue, to fund the, the budget increase on the Tower Blocks.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to introduce the report more generally, you know, no one wanted to see the increase in the cost of this project. The reality is, after many years of a, of a slow construction industry, we're now at a point where there's an awful lot of demand and, and...
where there's an awful lot of demand and contractors are at a point where they can pick and choose and rather than just pricing in risk, they can use risk as a reason to dramatically increase their prices and obviously we've talked in the news papers around, particularly around Hoptmore Tower and some of the additional risks that are there, that hasn't just been priced in there, which are EC Harris, the external consultants we had on this, had figured in, but they've done more than that and they've priced in additional costs now, you know, that is for us to meet. We can do that within our current budgets as we've just been discussing, the shift in the money of the section 106, as Nigel just explained, a large amount of money is coming from the HOA, omni go housing, so we're starting money around one thing. It's still a very exciting and great project though, this one, you know, we have worked extensively with tenants, seventy percent of tenants have been consulted on this. The items that were added in the past were ones that the tenants wanted and agreed to do, for example, the enclosure of balconies. It's going to completely change the way not only that buildings look, but dramatically change them in terms of energy efficiency. We're looking at the external areas, which are some that we didn't originally have in the project but would have been done somewhere else by the council anyway. Now that will be done within the council, new parking areas, new external landscaping, that sort of thing. It's an extensive and exciting programme, it's also a big stage on the step for the next report around Blackbird Lees regeneration because of course two of the five tower blocks are on that estate. I don't know if Stephen wants to everything?
Okay, so coming through those recommendations then, so we made the additional inventory provision as the contract nineteen and confirmed authority to award the contract. Yes, we're on item fourteen, we'll let Scott just give us a failure for it, is the Blackbird Lees regeneration delivery partner.
Yeah, so to begin where I just left off there, this isn't the beginning of regeneration, it's the continuation of regeneration, it's also not the end of regeneration. We will be looking at refurbishing the tower blocks next year, we've already done work in our parks, New Play Area at Blackbird Lees Park, funding for Spinababy Park, we're building homes and we're doing farm nearby, so there's an awful lot is going on within the Blackbird Lees area already, but this is a big, big, big step, which is looking at the regeneration of a fifty-year-old district centre in the centre there. This will bring 190 desperately need homes, not just in Oxford but desperately especially in an area like mine where, I think, one in three or, no, one in six for housing need of some sort. So, you know, this will be great benefits to the new housing to the people of Blackbird Lees and not just to the people of Oxford or generally. New community centre, bringing together a number of other organisations as well, looking at bringing the library into that, looking at bringing the advice centre into that and having a purpose-built new community hub. The current facilities there are showing their age, shall we say, and as well as refurbished shops as well and a new district centre. Over the last year, the councillors worked to look at the feasibility of proposals around regeneration following other pieces of consultation work we've done in the past. What we have here is not bells and whistles of all the different things that we would like to do, but it is an extensive plan and it's one that we can do, we think, in financial terms, but Orstow can do because of land ownership issues. We can make sure that we don't lose the shops for any period of time and that we always have a community centre. We own the land and we can do something here, but it doesn't prejudice against future regeneration following on from this, so there's an option, A, presented in the report, which would look at Elise Avenue, taking this right through to Great Elise and improving highways and having more shops. That isn't something that won't be done in the future potentially, this plan does not prejudice against that, but it is still massively exciting and transformative for the community where I live and represent. I think it's exciting. We're looking to appoint not just an external partner to work up these plans, but to see them delivered on the ground. It's very exciting. We've put in 10.6 million in the budget for Lees regeneration more generally, that will help support this piece of work.
Not similar to what we've done on Barton, but it's in a bit different context, with a different funding regime. Fiona, do you want to add anything?
Just worth adding, I suppose, that in the context of regeneration on the Lees, the college of FE is rebuilding its campus at the moment quite ambitiously and we do hopefully get a planning application from Mr Cassam about some of the land around the Cassam Stadium, which also would add to the potential in that area too. So that's...
Yes. Could I just add my personal thanks to Fiona for just aware of the amount of work she's done on this over this period and something wouldn't be here without her drive. I'm just hoping that that's a good one.
Thank you very much. Dee?
Can I just ask about the housing? Is my perception that there's a need for larger dwellings for bigger families? I don't know whether that's an accurate perception. Is the mix of dwellings that you're proposing reflecting that?
Do you take it or I take it? You're welcome. I mean, there will be a suitable mix, but one of the things we're all looking to do is to tie in with a piece of work that we're doing around underoccupation on the estate itself, because there's quite a large amount of underoccupation of the existing social housing on the estate. So we're likely to be skewing some of the build towards smaller accommodation in order to allow under occupiers to release that larger accommodation and stay within the community. So we're wanting to target two pieces of work together.
Good. Let's approve the recommendations then and move on to item fifteen, anything which we're going to be ready. Sixteen minutes, which are, I think, very good. I don't know if there's any comments and actually anything to be commented about the sport confidential ones.